Call is being ordered for the regular meeting of the City Council of Needles and the Needles Public Utility Authority. Tuesday, May 24th, we're going to go into executive session. Would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Campbell.
President.
Williams.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
We would like to have a matter added. John, will you take this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Rick. So do we have all the council members present?
No.
No, we have.
Kristen's not here.
Kristen still on her way. Will join us. And then Wade is not on the phone, but he will be in closed session.
Okay.
Five here now.
Alright, so that's two thirds, right? Okay, so we just need a, we need a motion that this item requires immediate action.
I'm not on.
The late add requires immediate action and the need to take action came to the attention of the city subsequent to the agenda being posted. So we need a motion to that effect by the council and we would need all council members to vote in favor of that in order to add this item to the agenda.
It's coming.
Okay.
The one gets knocked over there.
It's litigation.
So we need a motion for our late add?
I'm moving on the matter.
A second? And Dr. Pageant, I need a second for the late add?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Um, councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And so we had four, we had four votes on that? Okay, and Mayor, Mayor, the item that's being added is conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.94. That's one case.
Alright, and that will be number B on this. We're gonna, we're gonna move it around anyway. We'll do that in count.
One of them I heard.
That's what we're gonna move. So conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8, agency negotiator, city manager Rick Daniels or his designee. Negotiating parties are the city of Needles as a potential seller and William Kavanaugh as a potential buyer of a portion of the property described as 4.59 acre vacant parcel generally located south of West Broadway Street and west of S Street flood control channel APN 0185-071-1111. Under negotiations are the price and terms. And the second item is conference with legal counsel regarding potential litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 549 points, I mean 54956.941, potential case. With that, we'll adjourn to executive session.
So which one am I recusing on? C?
Last one.
I'm accusing on C, John, because I work in cannabis.
Right, and that particular matter involves potential initiation of lawsuit against a cannabis business in town. Thank you.
Good. Alright, we're gonna start this regular meeting of the city council and the Needles Public Utility Authority for the city of Needles, California, Tuesday, May 24th, 2020. And we've already called order and we're doing a roll call. We'll have the executive session report out by the city attorney.
Yes, the council met an executive session. Item A was conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Agency negotiator, city manager Rick Daniels or his designee. Negotiating parties are the city of Needles as a potential seller and William Kavanaugh as a potential buyer of a portion of the property described as 4.59 acre vacant parcel generally located south of West Broadway Street and west of South Street flood control channel APN 018507111. Under negotiation are price and terms. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. Item number two was NPUA and council conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.941, potential case. That potential case is potential litigation against a cannabis industry, a cannabis business in town. And for that reason, councilmember Longacre recused himself and did not participate in closed session on that item. There was no reportable action taken in closed session on that item. The third item was a late add and that too was conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.941, potential case. There was reportable action taken on that item. There was a motion made by councilmember Ellen Campbell and a second by Vice Mayor Pageant to initiate legal action against Brian Brown. And the vote was Vice Mayor Pageant in favor, councilmember Campbell in favor, councilmember Evans in favor, councilmember Merritt in favor, councilmember Longacre in favor, and councilmember Bell in favor. And that concludes the report out from closed session.
Thank you. Would you please rise for invocation and pledge allegiance? Get bow with me, dear Lord. Please be with us as we make these decisions for what's best for our community. We ask you to please help us put you in our forefront and treat each other with kindness and compassion. We love you, Lord, and we ask that you write us and help us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join with me in saying the praise to our glorious flag. By plenitude, we be just as stood in the light of the United States of America, and as their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the agenda.
I'm sorry?
Or there's a, I would like to move, I am.
Oh, that's right.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, excuse me. Up and deal with it as item I.
Yes.
Before the consent agenda?
That works. Thank you. Okay, with that adjustment, we have a motion. Still, Kristen?
Yeah.
A second from Doc Pageant, yes?
Yes.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
Any call, well, yeah. Okay, Zach, conflict of interest?
Yes, sir. Executive session, item B and agenda items three, four, and sixteen. And I'm accusing myself because I work in the cannabis industry and these are all cannabis items.
Thank you. As a courtesy of those that attend, we ask you set your cell phones to their silent mode. Public appearance. Persons wish to address the city council or NPUA on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record in order to conduct a timely meeting and three minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code section 54950 prohibit city council from taking an action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. With that, are there any public appearances? Sylvia? You want, okay, Jeremy, hop up.
Johnson, 1320, Santa Fe Circle. Recently, we've seen an uptick in graffiti around town. Sage Motel has been tagged. The post office in the alley has been tagged several times. There's tagging on private residences below Lily Hill Stat. The state just recently took about approximately seven gallons of paint to do the bridge by River City Pizza, No Street. Also racial tagging and taggings at Park Mulberry where they tagged just about everything they could. That was all cleaned up prior to our big holiday where people coming into town. This is not a fair representation of our town. The racial stores and everything were taken down pretty quick. I don't think that's anybody who's here. That's people passing through, going to Park Mulberry. But the stuff in town should be taken care of just in general as it does, you know, get taken care of. But now that we're coming up on a big holiday, we've got people coming in. We're trying to promote this town. So those are all painfully obvious because they're in areas of high traffic. Also, second matter, had some people wanting to know when the pool opens. It's open seven to nine usually for free swim at night. Their issue is the rec is a rec facility, but it's not have, the public does not have access to, they feel. The rec is open for basketball, or after school, I mean, and then it's open to the school to do their school thing, then it closes. And so if an adult gets off work and wants to go play basketball in there, it's not open for them at night. So their question was, is there staffing or availability to have the rec open the same time the pool is? That way, when the pool shuts down, the rec shuts down. So some, some kind of late opening so that people who have a normal life and work and whatever can get in there late at night, play basketball, jog, walk, do whatever they want to do and use the rec facility. And then, and then that facility is available to people. At the same time, the pool is already open, so staff is already there. If there was somebody who could be there and watch it or lock it up at the same time the pool is, thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Good one. Good evening, Mayor and members of council.
Oh, this is the budget. You ready to start the budget thing? Sorry. Let me announce this. I thought you wanted to do public appearance. That's a first. Alright. The first item, is that all the public appearance we have? Alright. So, so dang efficient. Number one, NPUA council, direction to proceed with the budget process and schedule the matter for a public hearing and action on June 14th, 2022 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We have our budget workshop this evening in which we'll review all of the budgets, general funds, cemetery, grant funds, sanitation, golf course, et cetera. So the city manager, myself, and department managers developed this budget as required by our city charter. We met for three days in April to discuss the requests. Thereafter, finance staff got together and reviewed the requests, balanced each departmental budget, assessed our cash balances and cash flow, and created the budget that you have before you. Excuse me. Budget committee met on May the 12th and also this afternoon. Tana, Kirsten, and Jeff for those two days. So before you, you have general budget version two. So we'll start by going through the summary page, which is approximately four pages after the staff report. So as you can see, general fund revenues have increased approximately one, from 11,378 million to 11.579 million. The majority of the increase is due to an increase in property tax of 190,000 and sales and use tax 150,000. Also, some dramatic changes in the budget for general fund are the dispensary and cultivation tax. We under realized in fiscal 22, so we are adjusting the budget for fiscal 23 by 254,000, 54,000 in dispensaries and 200,000 in cultivation. Excuse me. Also, in the general fund, we are reducing the budget by 110,000, which is the BHHS Legal Foundation Grant, which was received in 22, not anticipated in fiscal 23. I just want to remind you that these numbers compare the mid-year budget numbers to the fiscal year 23 new budget numbers. These are not actual. That is the difference. I just want to remind you of that. In addition, there's a $43,000 decrease for the transfer from RDA. That was supposed to be received this fiscal year, the escrow and administrative fee for the sale of the ICE plant road property. That sale has not occurred. So we will not receive that escrow fee this year and we are not eligible to receive it next year. So that transfer is no longer needed because the SARDA is winding down. In fiscal 23 will be the SARDA's last year. Bonds will be paid off in August. And there is approximately 300,000 left in the low to mod income housing fund portion of the RDA, which staff is working to spend that money on the Needles beautification program. We are pending a contractor be hired to help us to complete that project. So, excuse me. Also, increase in launch passes for the Jack Smith Park of approximately $25,000. Those are the revenues, the larger items, the, that we've just gone through. For the departmental expenditures, that's the next section. And you can see the employment allocation changes across the board. Every five years or so, the city manager and staff get together and assess the tasks and the positions and, you know, determine whether or not the allocations that are in place are what really reflect the position's capacity. So some adjustments were made. As an example, the accounts payable position was 50% in utilities and the balance in other departments. We have moved that position in full to finance, so 100% finance because that position does work basically for every department. So changes such as those. So for city manager, there was some department, there were some allocation changes of approximately 14,000 and a new computer for the new employee that started this year. In the finance department, as I mentioned, we have the employee allocation changes plus pay increases because this is year two of the paying class study. So across the board, you will also see those pay increases associated with year two. Also, an increase in legal fees as Mr. Pinkney mentioned. There's some pending litigation of which some of it is finance related. So we have put 25,000 in the budget for fiscal 20 year, 23 for that. Also, increases in internal service costs for the allocable costs attributable to finance and in audit fees. In the mayor council clerk department, of course, allocation changes, increase in election charges of about $4,000. Additional travel and training for new employee. That employee is also a notary, so we have some costs associated with that and additional office equipment. For planning and zoning, we had a major reallocation of the associate planner position between planning and utilities and pay increases associated with that. And also a $29,000 increase in the general plan update. For engineering, we are hiring a contract project manager. We have over $3 million of construction projects, parks, streets coming forward, and we need a professional project manager. There was nobody at the city that, in our staff, that has that capacity because these are some really large construction projects. So that's the $140,000 increase in engineering. We have an engineering firm, I'm sorry, in project management. We have an engineering firm who also has project management services. It's TKE Engineering, so we'll probably procure a project manager through them. For community promotions, we have a decrease in economic development grants. That number was, was expended last year. So the 24.5 expended last year is not the number that's going to happen this year. We don't know what that is. So we're just gonna put it in the budget as it's needed. So whatever, whoever applies, whichever company applies for those grants, we pay it out and budget it as it comes in. There's also a decrease in the economic development consulting from fiscal 22 of approximately $6,300 for DMG Consulting. Rumor has it Bracken is retiring. And on to senior centers, some minor increases for utilities and insurance, pay increases and equipment maintenance. For the sheriff contract, we budgeted the increase in the contract from fiscal year 22 to 23 only for the base level continuation. We had to do just that one at this point to balance the budget. So that's $246,000. And also a $20,000 increase in the PERS unfunded liability and vehicle fuel and repairs. In the animal shelter, we see a decrease of approximately 17,500 for the paying, the net of the pay increases and health insurance costs. And what that means is that an employee in the animal shelter department opted out of the city's health insurance and they have the family plan. So that was a savings of about $20,000. So netted with the pay increases, it's a decrease of about 17,500. There's also per year approval at last month, the increase in the spay and neuter and vet services. So that's an increase to this budget in fiscal 23 for animal shelter of $9,900. That, those clinics for rabies and the vet services are by annual. So building and safety, we are adding an in-house building inspector. In the budget, we're going to go out to try to hire a building inspector. We currently have a vacant building official position slash city engineer position that kind of transpired, you know, within the last few weeks. So in the budget, we still have building official slash city engineer, which will be adjusted for the next meeting. So that'll be reduced because now it will only be building official, getting together with HR and getting the estimate on what the building official would be, would be less. Also, a reduction in consulting services as a result of the building inspector being brought in-house. For code enforcement, we have pay increases per contract and a new code enforcement officer started this year. So we have additional travel expense for training for that officer as well as continued certifications for the other two code officers. Increased costs in fleet maintenance, vehicle fuel and software subscriptions, as well as an $8,000 increase in the cost for the admin hearing officer. For public works, there was a difference between fiscal 22 and 23 for capital equipment and bridges that's on the fiscal 22 budget being reduced or eliminated on the fiscal 23 budget of $238,000. Employee allocations and pay increases, a net of 18,782. And on to sanitation, we have reduction in payroll costs there of 8,500. An increase in the allocable internal service costs of approximately 16,000. And also the household hazardous, hazardous waste services and fuel that the fire department puts on. We have an increase in those costs of $2,600. That's a net, those three line items, there are a net increase of $10,000. Aquatics has an increase in utilities as well as insurance and life scan expenses. Parks, building and grounds, we show an increase in employee costs of 101,000, mostly due to the allocation and also the transfer of some of the golf maintenance employees that came over to that department. So this will be like the full year of having those employees in the department since we contracted with Touchstone for golf maintenance at November 2021. For Jack Smith Park, we also see some allocation changes there of $38,000 decrease and increase for security monitoring services of 4,950. And of course, credit card fees are going up as well as pass printing costs for about $1,300. For the rec center, there was a question about this today in our budget committee meeting. First, we have our pay increases per contract and associated costs of 37,000, but we have a capital project item. Here, it says not completed in fiscal year 22. It's the air conditioning unit that's on the agenda for later this evening. So this may be eliminated for the next report, this 15,000. I'm, I've emailed the manager at rec department to confirm that this is the same unit because they do have several units there before I eliminate it from this budget. For the transfers, the difference of the three million is the golf transfer that we did in February. So we're reducing it because it's not happening again this year. As well as 300,000 for the I-40 match. That was a one-time deal that happened in 22. The cemetery subsidy is increasing by 19,000. And those are the details for the summary sheet on the general fund. I'd like to draw your attention back to the summary page for the cash balance of the general fund. We currently have projected cash for June 30, 2020, that's this year, of $24,000. However, we did not complete the full year two budget, budgeted amount for the street improvements, which for the 15-year plan is 2,966 something or other, 776, I believe. We had some engineering delays, some major engineering delays. So we did not spend all of those funds. We have a savings of 2 million that is going to roll over into our reserve to help balance our budget. The net change between the revenues for the current year and the expenditures are 1.6 million. Though that number added to the 2,024,000, less the new amount for fiscal year 23 street projects, which we are allocating 2.4 million, leaves us with a reserve balance projected at June 30 of 23 of 1,152,000 or 10%.
Which is the council's policy.
Good job.
Yeah. So any questions on the general fund budget?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I might add. We are seeing a slight increase in revenue, but a large decrease in expenditures. We are hitting the target. It is a balanced budget as what we presented to you. I'd like to draw your attention to capital projects. We are going to be doing between 21 and 23 billion in capital projects. Streets, parks, electric, water, sewer, and sidewalks. For example, if you look on page labeled capital improvements, we are doing $7 million in park improvements. There is 4 million for Dub Watkins, 200 for Jack Smith, new park down by the river, 2.2. We're looking at shade structures and we're looking at other park improvements. We've begun that already. We applied for a rain for irrigation system at the golf course, which is the thing that's holding us, I think, the biggest challenge we have at the golf course. We were able to receive $800,000 out of 2 million. So we are working with Touchstone and our public works and Rainy Torrance about what we can get for that 800,000 that's allocated and then finish the rest off of it in subsequent years. But it is, as you point out, that we are projecting as a result of prices dropping and our marijuana tax collection based on gross receipts, that we're expecting gross receipts to drop about $200,000 in the upcoming year. But we have not counted in the new facilities, which we expect a 20,000 square foot building in Goldbridge in June. Two in August, one in July, and then probably one six months. So that additional may push that number back up as more permitted. But as of right now, we budget cannabis revenue very conservatively. And that's, I think, the best posture for us to be. All in all, it's a good budget. It improves the service level that we're doing. And I'm happy with this.
Okay. Is there any discussion? We need a call. We need a motion. We're in to direct, direct to proceed with.
Approve the budget and thank you.
I'll second it.
We have to schedule a matter for a public hearing is what the motion needs to be. Alright.
I'd like to.
June 14th.
I'll move to schedule this budget for a public hearing.
For June 14th.
For June 14th.
Thank you.
I'll second that, your honor.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Sorry about that.
I'm so tired.
I know. I understand.
Councilmember Campbell? Yes. Evans?
Yeah.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Bell? Yes. Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you get Wade's vote? Did you get Wade's vote? Thank you. He's not here.
Thank you.
He's there.
You did, but.
I'm here somewhere.
My problem. I apologize.
Thank you.
Alright, second item. Accept a bid from Cora Construction for a base bid in the amount of $2,86,775 to construct a new Lily Hill booster station on Lily Hill and Clary Drive and authorize staff to issue a notice of reward and notice to proceed to be reimbursed by a grant from the state, California State Water Resources Control Board. Mr. Rick?
The council and the NPUA board commissioners, the existing Lily Hill booster station, which from the wealthy. which from the wealth fields, we can pump the water up that high. We need additional boosting through pumping through the storage tanks at both the burial grounds and at the east or the west end of town. That, the current booster stations juts out into Lily Hill at Clary. The state has funded a request by the city for $2 million to relocate that booster station out of the roadway. And I passed around artist's rendering of what the facility would look like. Because it's residential, the, the nature of the building kind of somewhat appears residential. But we're asking, and this is 100% funded by a grant we're receiving from Federal Water Quality Control. Our recommendation is reward the bid and that allow us to get under construction within about two weeks.
So are any questions?
This, this rendering shows a sidewalk, the sidewalk that's there for part of it, part of that property. And then a new sidewalk that's wrapping around. That sidewalk is on our list of sidewalks for, you know, safe, safe passage at schools. So if they're covering it, can we take that off and add a different sidewalk to the list?
Well, we've already spent all the money from safe route school, but if there's money, the answer is yes.
We're applying for new grants for that though, right now.
That's right.
And is that one of the sidewalks on that grant?
Yes, but this is, as of today, this is money in the bank.
So they're going to put the sidewalk in.
As we proceed to straighten out Lily Hill as it sets today. And so that road will continue to the same curve as the apartments on Clary. And then for the houses on Lily Hill, that will be a straight shot. It won't be that jut out anymore. And we will put in a sidewalk. And if it means that we add that, propose that sidewalk as part of another program, then we'll add to another sidewalk for that program.
Thank you. Ellen?
Where this sits coming out, as we previously discussed because of another project, this was going to be moved back to kind of be in line to allow that property to be.
That's real interesting.
Is this still going to be moved back?
This, this allows us to move it back all on our property. And still, we have surplus property behind that, that could be built for housing.
All right, I need a motion.
I will move to approve.
Second. Thank you, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt? Yes, Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to adjourn the joint MPUA City Council meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. And we're going to deal with number 16 now. Rick?
The council has had discussions for a number of years about changing the methodology by which the city collects its marijuana.
You're out of here.
Oh, hold on.
Thank you. He's busy talking to Tom. Stop disrupting him. Go ahead, Rick.
In 2010, voters approved a ballot measure which levies a 10% gross receipts excise tax on cannabis at all of cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, and retail. There has been discussion and has other cities since 2010 have adopted taxes. There have been some improvements in the methodology by which the tax is changed. And many of the new ordinances that have been approved utilize a tax by square foot of the total building. For example, a 20,000-square-foot building would be 20,000 square feet times tax. Tells the grower, the cultivator, what they, what they should pay in taxes. Retail, we found is a different animal. That there's no correlation between the size of a dispensary and the gross revenue. So our consultant has recommended that we leave dispensaries alone. We continue to levy the tax up to 10% excise tax on dispensaries. But on cultivation, that we shift to a square foot tax, a tax by square foot. So what we've done is, this is the very first draft of an ordinance which shifts cannabis to the square foot tax, cannabis cultivation. And they're recommending, and our imperative was to generate the same amount of money this year that we collected by the gross receipts tax with the equivalent square foot tax, which would generate the same amount of money. So the consultant recommended $20 a square foot for the city's tax. So this is the first of three steps. This is to initiate the discussion amongst the council. And we'll be meeting with the industry about, about this, the tax. And then at your next meeting, you should be in a position of being able to hold a public hearing on the tax and then make a decision about whether to put it on the ballot for the voter's approval or disapprove of voter consideration at a meeting. I think it's three meetings from now.
Sooner, sooner than later.
Okay.
Now would be, because we have to consolidate with the county, the county has their own time-wise, has he prefer versus.
Per the ballot, there's, there's some timeline. So you'd have a public hearing and you could act to refer it to the public.
Yeah, real quick, Mike, the timeline that I proposing to the council, obviously it's up to you, but we'd like to get this in front of you to approve the ordinance. Once it's approved, the ordinance, it will be on the ballot. Once this is on the ballot, at the next meeting, while approving the first reading of the ordinance, there'll be a resolution on the same meeting. And that resolution basically asks the question that you want the voters to ask at the next, for the ballot in November 2022. And so basically, so the two steps are, there'll be an ordinance, you're going to approve the ordinance, there'll be a resolution, you approve the resolution, then it will go onto the ballot. Once it's approved or not approved by the voters, if it is approved, it will come back in the second reading at the first meeting after the, the election, so in January.
So you have a couple meetings after making the decision.
Ellen?
You have Pete Ruses, because I need a picture. We are not Zach and we don't necessarily understand the difference between changing it and repent to a per foot.
Okay.
So what, what does that, what does that equate to? So I could, so this voter can understand this and make a informed decision.
Current ordinance authorizes, requires the council to levy taxes on cannabis operations up to 10% of their gross sales. So if they sell $1 million of cannabis, then the city gets $100,000. And what you've done with that $100,000 is you have dedicated that for infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, water lines. On a square foot tax, we don't care what the price is. That they would instead pay based on the size of their building that they're growing. And obviously, a, a 10,000-square-foot building would generate a certain amount. And a 20,000-square-foot building would generate two, in terms of taxes. So we would determine the taxes to be paid by every cannabis business except dispensaries by the square foot. So it would be, the tax becomes very simple. And that is square foot times, in this case, 20 equals taxes owed. And we don't have to give anymore, well, we sold two pounds to Larry at $1,500 a pound. We sold 200 pounds to Sally at 900 a pound. So it will make their tax forms very simple. And it's square foot of building times amount, amount. And our consultant has recommended $20 a square foot. Now, that's, and, and if you all said it at that, it should generate the same amount of revenue that we received last year, which was $4.57 million, which went into our infrastructure. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Wade.
Okay, just to make this clear, this is a, it's canopy, right, Rick?
No, it's size of the building.
Size of the building, okay, and, and this is annually?
Yes.
So, so you're going to be taxed monthly, it's your monthly tax, just like they do today. It's the gross receipts, the 10% gross receipts, we get it monthly. This would be the same case, but instead of the 10% gross receipts, it's a monthly payment based on the state licensed square footage of the building.
That's okay, so just for example, a, let's say a thousand-square-foot building is going to owe $20,000 a month?
That's what I want to get?
Yes. Doesn't that seem a little, doesn't that seem a little high, guys?
Well, you know, we can, we could, we would, there's some fine tuning of this that's going to need to go on. Perhaps we might want to look at various stages, like one, one very small 1,000 square footers versus the 20,000 or the 200,000 square feet. So there's a lot of work to do on this. We'll be meeting with the industry and we'll bring that back. Our goal was to develop a number to start with that would generate the same amount of money as the city received last year.
Okay, so just to put these numbers in everybody's head real quick. A thousand-square-foot building would owe the City of Needles $240,000 a year in cannabis excise tax. Let that sink in, guys.
In cannabis square foot tax.
Oh, okay, cannabis square foot tax. $240,000 a year for a thousand-square-foot building.
Right.
Well.
Right. And, and I'm going to ask now of what it would, what their current paying. I'm sure that'll be a lot of the discussion we have.
Hold on just a minute. Well, somebody, please move, move your, move your phone, please. Thank you. I'm sorry, Rick, go ahead.
That's going to be part of the discussions we'll have with the industry over the next couple, three weeks.
Real quick, our consultant's on the line, he wants to answer that question. All right, go ahead, David. So just a brief introduction, we brought in HDL, who does this across the United States. HDL companies are also the part of the report that was provided to you today. They're the authors of this report. So on the line, we have David, who's going to be answering the question that you just asked. Go ahead, David.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council, David McPherson. So the response to that, it's not that dollar amount, because it's by 1/12, because it's annually. So if you take that figure and you divide it by 1/12 monthly, they would be dividing, paying 1/12 for that for the full year. So it wouldn't be 240,000 for 1,000, it would be that $20 a square foot at the amount of square footage. And then if you multiply it and say that would be a year, but you're only paying it a monthly, so it wouldn't be that total for the whole year, for, for each month.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
So back to Wade's, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So back to Wade's example, it would be 1/12 of that amount every month. So you have the total right, but divided by 12, and that would be the monthly payments.
$20,000 a month?
We're still making $20,000 a month.
No, it doesn't. Divide that by 12, so it's $1,666 per month.
$240,000 divided by 12 is $20,000.
What did you say?
No, that he's saying $20 per square foot per year.
Right, per year.
Not, it's 20,000 for the year for a thousand-square-foot building.
Okay, so, okay.
So it's $1,666 per month, unless David, I'm understanding you wrong.
That's correct, that's correct, you got it right.
Okay, yes, thank you, because Patrick, you had said monthly, and I thought it was $20,000 a square foot.
Yeah, they'll be making the payments monthly. I apologize, I meant, I meant they'll, they'll be making monthly payments.
Okay, okay, thank you so much, you cleared it up, thank you, I'm no longer confused.
Wade was still right, because we're dealing with cannabis history, it's high.
And that would be, for a thousand-square-foot building, that would be 1,666.
Thank you for those who got that, appreciate it.
Yes, yes. So, but again, the, the, we will be holding meetings with the industry to address this.
Any other questions from the council? Open up for some, okay.
Sort of this out and understanding that.
Wait, we're going to open this up for a public hearing?
Come on down, please.
Yeah.
Let's talk, anybody.
I'm expecting to speak, Cheryl Montanez, 5268, Dos Palmas Road in Beeland, California.
Use the mic.
Do I need to repeat it? Am I good? I just, I've always wanted Needles to go to the price per square foot. At most cities, I do, all over LA, all the surrounding cities of LA are a square foot. It is canopy, so if you're going on the state number, state only cares about your canopy. So a 20,000-square-foot building will give you about 10,000 square foot in canopy. So there's a 10,000-square-foot canopy license and there's a 22,000-square-foot canopy license. You can have multiples of the smalls and so forth. But what it will do for you is give you a consistent income. You won't have to ride the market. I think you guys are missing some dollars because the market dropped real low since October. So you guys probably felt that, so you won't feel it. So that's what's good for the city, it's a consistent number, it's budgetable for the growers, for everybody, that, it's a much better way to go. I have to process the 20 bucks a year part. Other cities are just per square foot, it's anywhere from $4 to $12, depending on the city, per canopy square foot per month. So I'll do some math and calculate back, but I'd love to be involved. And I can bring real numbers from the guys and compare, because I know you're trying to keep it at, near what you're used to. But I think, yeah, you'll find it's much easier, it'll be less work, less accounting, less room for fudging. But it's, the industry-wide, it's canopy for sure. Because I could have a 30,000-square-foot building, but if I only have a small license, I can only do 10,000 square foot. Right, so whatever I'm paying the state for my canopy should be what I'm paying you. Then it keeps it consistent, because building size, if I buy an existing building, like I could be doing multiple licenses out of it, it'll get weird. But consistency-wise, if you do the state canopy size, and then, yeah, I'll look at some numbers, or whatever, I'm not sure. Kind of sounds better.
That's good input, yeah.
Cheryl with the consultant's report, which looked at what other. Cheryl, with the consultant's report, which looked at what other jurisdictions are charged as well. And has a discussion about the building size versus the canopy.
Okay.
If we go to the canopy, the number would be a little bit higher, because, uh, but it will be whatever the state, uh, permits.
Right. Great, thank you for that input, Cheryl, appreciate it. And Rick, can I get a copy of that also? That report? It's hooked in? Okay. Yeah, I need a hard copy, all right.
Can I, I think the goal is here to be fair also, our job, our goal is not to drive out business in town, so we want this to be easier for us and easier for you. So we do want everybody's input on this, we do appreciate it. This isn't us trying to drive you out of business by any means.
Is there any more public com, uh, comment on this item? Bring it back to the council and for motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our request would be accept the report and schedule it for a public hearing.
I will move to accept the report and schedule it for a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Right, further discussion, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
So.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to number three. Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of an application from MSB Facilities representative for MSB LLC for amending resolution number twenty seventeen dash twelve of a conditional use permit, adding a second twenty thousand square foot building for cannabis cultivation facility in the C one neighborhood, commercial zone, located at eleven oh five Lily Hill Drive, also known as APN zero one eight six dash, or one nine one dash five seven dash zero 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 zero, and zero one eight six dash one nine one dash five zero dash zero zero zero, formerly known as APN zero one eight six one nine one five zero 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 zero, and one eight six dash one nine one dash five three dash zero 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 zero. Applicant is MSB Facilities, and if you all want those numbers, you can have them.
Patrick? Yes, I'm a member of the council. In front of you, we have resolution number two zero two two dash four three, as previously stated. I've been taking through the whole piece, but today's May twenty-fourth, and it is May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, regarding cannabis cultivation facility. Again, we're gonna amend an existing CUP to add a building at the site eleven oh five Lily Hill Drive. So looking at the vicinity map, you can see the project is zone commercial, it's the, the red zone right there, it's, uh, north of the existing, so north of this project is the existing thirty thousand square foot building. To the south of it are residential apartments, to the east is the I forty, and to the west is the Elks Lodge, and the west flood control land and the interstate freeway. Here's an aerial map of the site, you can see, uh, that it's, it's wedged between, uh, the existing building, the freeway, the residential buildings to the south, the Elks Lodge to the west, and then a freeway again to the east. So the applicant is requesting to amend their existing CUP to add a twenty thousand square foot building facility to the thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy foot cannabis cultivation development that's already at the site. Uh, the site is situated, it's two different parcels, so, but the building itself is gonna go on the six foot, six four acre portion of the twenty-one acre parcel located at eleven oh five at the C one commercial neighborhood zone designation, which permits the use of cannabis, the project will operate seven days a week, six AM to six PM, will employ fifty full-time employees, and there's adequate parking at the site. Looking at the site overview, we're gonna look out and then look in, so looking out, you can see that the existing building is there to the north, and then Lily Hill is gonna be to the west. Zoom in, so Lily Hill is located on the west side of this, the entrance is the same entrance that you're gonna see, there'll be a block wall and a gate on Lily Hill, that's that area on the far left side, next to the hundred, you're gonna see the entrance come in. What you're seeing there in the middle is the new building that's gonna be proposed with the, uh, east end of that parking at the site. The entrance, the building won't be on the parking side, on the east side of the building. People will park, enter the building, and then leave out that driveway. Okay, looking at the floor plan, you can see that there are ten cultivation flowering rooms, each one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven square feet, a warehouse, storage space, fragmentation room, dry rooms, electrical room, offices, break room, IT room, and restrooms. So basically, what you're seeing at all, all the different facilities, nothing, nothing special, but the interior, exterior elevation, you're gonna see that if you go off I forty right now, you see those buildings that are being built on the I forty, they are also the owners of those as well. Oh, sorry, ninety-five, well, forty, ninety-five, you know, Victory, hey, we've been walking for days, ICSA, I won't go there. Anyways, so, uh, here's the exterior elevations, you're gonna see much of the same that's already being built out there at one hundred Victory. So again, you've got the two, the two different colors, uh, on the building side. Looking at the, um, landscape plan that's been provided, they're looking at nineteen thousand square feet of shade being provided with thirty-seven valley oak trees being planted throughout the development, and twenty new landscape shrubs. So you can see the, the image, uh, showing the various plants being, uh, planted throughout the entire parcel that you saw that was in the red. So just looking at it, the west side of this building is gonna be the Lily Hill parcel, uh, or access point, so if you're driving down Lily Hill, you look to your right, coming down towards the bridge, you're gonna see the, the, the trees and the oak trees and valley oak trees that are being depicted there on site. And then here's just a rendering map, uh, it's labeled A, B, E, D, and C, so we're gonna take you through the development, again, this is provided to us by the applicant. So here's just U A, these are just renderings, so as you come in off of Lily Hill, you'll see this, uh, this is what you'll look at, you'll enter through a gate. B, again, this is just the corner as you come in. This is the parking lot side, if you're an employee, you'll, you'll be seeing this, um, the C and the D, because these are the parking lot areas. This is the E, um, E is the, uh, two-phased, uh, building, again. So here's a rendering of the, the building. Basically, as you're looking in off of Lily Hill, this is what you're gonna be able to see. And then again, here's just some site photos going through what were provided, so if you're coming, looking at Lily Hill, this is what you're seeing today, A and B. This is the exterior as you come down the driveway. This is what you're gonna see from the freeway. And again, this is what you're gonna see from the, uh, the backside, the other side of the building, coming back on the Lily Hill. So this is what the site looks like today. Um, the building, the gate right there, you're gonna see that the gate, um, is, there'll be a building there, the, the chain link fence on that side is gonna remain the same. Um, but again, there'll be a block wall coming up off of Lily Hill, but that, a building is basically gonna be located right there where those, those gate, the gate is. So looking in, again, there's the existing thirty thousand square foot building, and you're gonna see the new building just in front of that on the, um, east end of this photo. And again, this is just looking in off of Lily Hill. And so there were some added conditions that are part of the conditional use permit, so basically, an installation of a six-foot block wrought iron fence at the entrance, so the existing six-foot chain link fence will remain the same on the side. Uh, prior to issuance of a permanent certificate of occupancy, basically, this was amended at the last planning commission meeting. So I'll, I'll tell you what the amended version is, but basically, this was in there from before. So basically, the indoor cultivation should not adversely affect the health and safety of nearby residences by creating any smoke, dust, odor, and public should not be, um, impacted due to these, um, facilities. All facilities shall incorporate, operate, and maintain sufficient odor-absorbing ventilation through the use of closely charcoal-lined filtration and exhaust system, so every, so this conditional use permit, and like all cultivation permits, have this condition in it that they are not allowed to emit odors, or create any, any kind of public nuisances. I wanna point that out, so, like every conditional use permit, you're required to make these findings, and so let's go through these findings. So one is in the permissible uses, yes, is the application complete, yes. Is the development in general conforming with the needle's plan? Because it's a neighborhood commercial, and the ordinance allows, uh, six twenty-nine AC allows for cannabis cultivation to occur in a neighborhood zone, it does meet the general conformity of the general plan. And it's properly zoned, so is it in harmony, as we previously stated, that the building is currently just south, so it's, it's just south of an existing thirty, thirty thousand square foot facility located on the undeveloped six point six four acre lot. They're gonna be adding this twenty thousand square foot building at the site, the conditions of approval require that only cultivation may be performed within the building, so no manufacturing, anything of that nature. Again, there's the fifty vehicle trips per day that was brought up at the planning commission meeting also, but they state that that will not create any impact off of Lily Hill. Therefore, this type of project is consistent with the uses occurring in the vicinity of the project site. So, finding number five, the development will not materially endanger the public health or safety. Excuse me, so the facility is located on a undeveloped area of the city. Uh, conditions of approval have been placed on the project to ensure that the lighting, security, ventilation of this new twenty thousand square foot building is, uh, is not impacting the health or safety purposes. And then finding number six, the development will not substantially injure the value of adjoining budding properties. So again, um, the zoning of this facility, uh, is already an existing area where cultivation exists. But looking at the zoning, it permits it, the condition of the approval of the twenty thousand square foot building will be painted in the earth tone colors, and so there won't be any, um, eyesore in terms of the billing itself. Uh, these improvements will provide aesthetic integrity for the area to not degrade the value of the joining properties. So there are big conditions that have been put on this, and we'll talk about it next, but all facilities shall operate within and maintain sufficient odor-absorbing ventilation exhaust systems. So at the last planning commission meeting on May eleventh, twenty twenty-two, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve this project. The planning commission, but there was significant discussion regarding odors that had been emitted at the existing building of the project site. As we are aware, there are odors that are being, and, and they have been, uh, noticed, they have been given violations for the site. So the applicant did acknowledge at the planning commission meeting that there are odors that are, and is currently a project at the public site, and he also shared that they inherited the problem when they purchased the building, which had the package units, so the package units send the air out, and they're gonna go into it, but I don't wanna butcher that, but basically, they, they don't have a closed-loop system, which the applicant stated will help remedy this problem. So what they're recommending is that a new, uh, closed-loop system be installed at a price tag of three point two million, uh, to be able to restore order, uh, but the problem is that it's twenty-four months out. So, but they're already ordered it, they're already in the process, based on the testimony of the applicant, they're already in the process of removing those package units and then putting in the closed-loop system. And the applicant's also here, and they're also on the line, so you'll be able to talk to them right after me. So there was a condition of approval, as I talked to you about earlier, about this temporary certificate of occupancy. So basically, in effort to order, in order to, um, take their building offline, because that's what they're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to take off the existing building offline, if they're able to achieve a temporary certificate of occupancy for this new building, that's already gonna have that system in place. So they'll have a brand-new building that has this closed-loop system that doesn't emit any odors, but they can't get their certificate of occupancy without having the first building, uh, houses in order, basically, the odor needs to be removed there. So if they don't meet that, they won't get their occupancy, which doesn't allow them to operate in the building, you need to have a temporary, a certificate of occupancy, a permanent one, you gotta have the regulatory, you gotta have the state license, and then you gotta have our CUP. So basically, in a nutshell, they don't, uh, they're not able to mitigate it based on the testimony that was received, and they're, uh, at the planning commission meeting, then their, their application will be removed, basically, because they, they're emitting orders, and they'll go through the two-way process, and and Mr. Chavez will be able to, uh, work with them. So basically, that's what we're looking at, so our recommended action is to approve the amendment to the existing conditional use permit, adding the twenty thousand square foot building at the Lily Hill address, and approving resolution two zero two two dash four three, um, based on the fact that it is in a neighborhood commercial zone, and the applicant has stated they're gonna be able to mitigate the odors that are currently a problem at the site. I am available for any questions, the applicant is also here, Miss Dawn Williams, and Miss Lonnie Garcia is also on the line.
Any of the council have any questions for staff first?
What is, on our, on our new zoning, um, housing element, is residential commercial, we, what define that?
So neighborhood commercial just means it's a, it's a, it's a lower density type of use, but it is allowed. So basically, the way it stands is today, uh, in any commercial zone, cannabis is allowed to operate. So even if, um, this is, so since it's already currently zoned that, um, you know, would you wanna change it back to residential? Um, you know, that's something that you guys need to decide, but basically, it's already within an area that is cannabis. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be conform, really, it wouldn't be a conforming use because of the, the residential use and the commercial use, basically, as a planner, you wanna try and, um, separate those uses, and, and if you do have, and you are gonna find neighborhood commercial uses with, next to the residential, because that's why it's a neighborhood commercial, because they, they abut, and they don't contradict each other, so, but you gotta be able to mitigate that use in that commercial zone.
Well, then, my next question comes in, is all the other area considered residential commercial?
No, no, ma'am.
No, it's not, this is the only commercial on this side of the freeway.
So the rest of this will still be considered residential?
Yes.
In the new?
Yes, ma'am.
Do plan.
Nothing's changed, we're not changing anything.
Just wanna hear that.
Yes, ma'am, so, in your general plan, we are not changing any of that area, correct?
Alan?
Okay, so, building that it sits right now, that they're using, has, has the air machines that he bought it with, and could not change them out at the time.
Correct.
And without extreme cost above the fifty million it took to insulate that building.
The packaging units, yes, ma'am.
Starting over, and it would never be up and running until all that got done, it was cost prohibitive at the time. So when this building goes up, and I live across the street, close enough that we can barbecue, so when it smells, I do smell it. And I don't know what they've done, but it has been a lot better, and very minimal at this point. Um, so I just want to say that as a personal person who lives there, but those new machines cannot be changed out until they, they shut down this building, which shuts down their whole business. So the new building, they need to be in, up and running, and will be in compliance, so that they could go back in and rip these out and put the correct ones in. And from what I understand, he's also installing misters around the building to drop the air down, just as a secondary precaution. Um, so, I just wanted to, uh, clarify all of that, because he will not, I mean, this will, if we don't approve this, this shuts him down, but are we still citing him? At this point, with some of the machines that cannot even be fixed without shutting down completely, are we like beating him up? It's funny.
Go ahead, Rick.
Mr. Mayor.
Am I allowed to ask that question?
No, no, this is time to ask those questions. When we have a, a project that's out of compliance, as long as they have an active permit to fix the problem, we give them the races to, uh, fix the problem. And that's what, uh, the applicants propose is a solution to that problem.
Thank you, I just didn't wanna get us in a position where we're citing and finding, and then we're getting into a bigger problem, a bigger financial problem, which makes it harder to get to the end result.
Are there any further questions from the staff? I mean, for the staff? We'll hear from the, go ahead.
She's actually outside of the six hundred foot zone, just so, she's sitting right across the street, so I just wanna make, for the, for the record. I know, I understand, but.
Okay, would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Uh, your honor.
What?
I was just joking.
Um, yeah. I was gonna.
Your honor?
Yes.
Mayor, this is Wade.
Who?
Hi, uh, my name.
Hold on just a minute, Lonnie, what?
I, I just had, I just had some questions.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Wade, sorry about that.
That's okay, I think there's a delay there. That's okay. I think there's a delay there. Um, so I just, I just want to confirm this. If we were to revise the condition of this to re- uh, to read before the, to read this, like, say, for instance, before any certificate of occupancy, uh, temporary or permanent is issued, if, if we made the odor from the current building, if we said it must be mitigated, are you telling me that they would never be able to get it done? And second part of that question, if we do not put that in there, because the community's been complaining about this for a long time, does that mean they're going to complain for the next twenty-four months?
The, the applicant's actually on the line. I think that's a good question for the applicant to answer, but to answer your question about the temporary or permanent, it must be mitigated. The, the, the first building must be mitigated before we close out the second building. So there's a, there's a catch there for the city that in order for them to be compliant with that new building that they're requesting, which is in front of you today, that their first one, that they're responsible for their first one, that it doesn't emit any odors.
Okay, so the, so the.
Wait, hold on, just saying. Go ahead, Rick. Okay, go ahead, Wade.
So uh, um, a temporary or permanent uh, C O O would not be able to be issued until the odor was mitigated?
I see what you're saying. Uh, ma'am, so a temporary C O O could be issued in order for these folks to mitigate it. So a permanent C O O will not be issued if the building is not mitigated.
Okay, my, my first question was if, if we were to revise that, no C O O would, would uh, be issued, including temporary, until the odor was mitigated, where would that put uh, the applicant?
I'd let the applicant, um, if you don't mind, we can let the applicant ask for that.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me clarify a couple of terms we're using. Mitigate and eliminate. So what we are saying is that since the first year, when it first opened, they've been, they've been trying every mitigation measure they can short of the three point two million dollar solution. They have used, I forget the name of the tube, but there's, they've used fragrances to mask. They've used misting, they've used uh, doing all kinds. So they have mitigated it to the point that it's much less now based on complaints we received than in January, and we've seen nothing but progress. Now, what we are saying is that we would give them a building permit, allow them to construct the new building while we continue to mitigate less the odors. But before, and we would allow them to start operations on the new building that has all those odor eliminating measures built in. But they could not get a formal uh, certificate of occupancy, which meant all the measures were done until building one, the odors are eliminated. And so that'll give them opportunity to get up and running and a cash flow they can pay for uh, shutting it down. Plus the fact that uh, it's two years out on, or quick, so.
So the complaints, the complaints, if if this does pass, we're going to have to listen to complaints for another two years, correct?
Um, uh, no, they're going to continue to search for ways to reduce, reduce odors even further.
It's not every day.
And we have.
Okay, one, one second. Um, now I'm going to open this for a public hearing. And first up is the, your applicant, correct?
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead.
My name's Dawn Williams. I'm the general manager at Lily Hill currently, and I'm also working on the uh, four buildings that we're building on at one hundred Victory. Um, the concern about the odor mitigation and what we're currently doing is is significantly decreased. Um, our first violation, I believe, and don't quote me, but I believe was October. We had another one in November and had another one in December, and we didn't get another one until March because of everything that we have put into that building since we, since the inception. So the first plants went into that building July of last year. Uh, by the time we got through harvest is when we started having the issues with the, with the odor, uh, which is when we started to figure out like, what's, what's the system? What's wrong? What can we do to fix it? Um, actively put those plans in place for about three months and consistently have run now for the last three months without any uh, violations. Doesn't mean that we don't smell. We would never say that we don't. Um, it could come from anywhere, from our doors being open for transport, the days that we're chopping or harvesting, um, anything like that's coming out there. So every once in a while it will, but I think the consistency of what you were smelling in October, November and December has um, like Rick explained, everything that we've put into that building from can filters to filtration systems, to U V lighting, everything to condense and kill that odor as much as we possibly can with the units that we have currently on the building, um, is really the best we've done. But it, it, it has significantly um, gone down in the last several months.
Super.
So, and then, and, and to reiterate to what we're saying and and Patrick and the city, we've all worked really hard to make sure that we can get Lily to Hill two launched. Um, the plan there, it, could it take us two years? Yes, it could. Is that the plan? No, that's not the plan, because what we will do is as those units come in and we harvest those rooms, we'll pull rooms down one at a time. So the end result in getting us there may take us two years to get there. Um, but as soon as the units start coming in and we harvest and we can pull that unit off and put a new unit on is what we'll do. So it'll be a gradual change, which will increase the timeframe of us doing that. It'll also decrease the smell because as we get each room out of the ten rooms changed, those units changed out, that smell is going to continue to to mitigate and go away. So I think that that's kind of a imperative and important one, and if we do it on the side that, you know, we're getting the most complaints on, on the residential side versus the side that's, you can't really smell anything, but when you drive by the freeway, um, that would be our plan, and we've planned our harvest according to that. So we'll take one room down every ten weeks until we get all ten rooms taken down. So that's kind of the length of, of the plan there.
And how many rooms are up there?
Uh, we have ten. So we, we, there's ten rooms there. Um, we grow in nine. We do mom clones and veg and others, so, but yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments?
Jerry Johnson, thirteen twenty Santa Fe Circle. So as I understand it, they're going to start in construction of the second one, and they're not allowed to grow or operate in it until it's done and they got this ventilation working. Because as the smell has decreased, there's still issues with smell coming from that facility. Um, and based on her harvest, based on which way the wind's blowing, it's always windy here. So we smell it all the time. Um, it has gotten a little better, but it's still pretty bad. So as I understand it, they're going to build this building that's supposed to be a better filtration for the community, because everybody around there complains about it. And then they'll slowly move into that one while they fix the first one. And so the moving back and forth, I don't know if they're moving product or if they're going to start growing in that second one while they fix the first one. Okay. I'm hoping that works because uh, yeah, it's been pretty bad. A lot of people complained about it. Uh, call Adrian and myself on it every once in a while, so. Uh, last thing you want to do is wake up in the morning and go outside and that's all you're bombarded with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Barbara?
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, also, when the new building has come online, it's busy as could out on ninety-five, you will see the advancement in odor control that they have developed really sustainably.
Good.
That's why I'm up here.
Hey, Barbara.
That's, that's two, that's okay. You stole my thunder. What can I say? Barbara Beer, two thirteen Safari, two blocks from the four buildings on the ninety-five. And if there's any odor problems, I will be here constantly and.
I can note that. We just got a threat.
I, I heard no construction when steel was going up, and then um, as soon as the sides of the buildings went up, I started getting all kinds of refractive noise from everywhere, the railroad, the freeway, the highway, everything. So um, I'm not, I'm trying to adjust. I did live on Broadway with the trains. I do adjust like, but I, the odor, if, and I don't smell that very easily, but if there's an odor problem, it's these people. So we're going to know if it doesn't work in those huge buildings, those four buildings that are all right on top of each other in a residential area, so to speak, um, I'm going to be raising cane everywhere, okay? So that is like an experiment, and that will also, the way I understood them, the applicant to say, explain it, will give them income to possibly get the project done faster down on Lily Hill. Because they should be be able, by the size of those buildings, they're going to have a lot of income coming out of there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barb. Any other public input?
Your honor.
Yes.
We do have a communication from Pat Merchant, opposition to the project.
Oh, we got that.
My name's Lester Hansley. I live in Geek subdivision, twelve fifty-three River View Lane. We live right beside these four buildings this lady was just talking about. Understand that I haven't complained all the time this has been going on. They've had construction day and night. They've had trucks moving in and out. We've had dirt. We put up with this and we haven't said a word. My complaint is they just built a fence and they got rid of the alley that used to be behind my house. I've got two gates that I could take stuff in and out of my backyard, and they built their fence four feet from my fence. And I tried to complain. I talked to the code enforcement. He said, well, you better be careful because they may come in and take ten feet off your property. I don't know what to do, and I thought I'd come up here and tell you. I, I think we're going to have the same problem she just talked about with the odor. I can't smell that well. I worked on a railroad for years, but my wife really can, and she says that she can smell it all over town where it's growing. But I really think we've got a problem with this alley that they took away. There's no, it used to be a utility corridor. Electricity, the water, the gas all ran up and down this alley. It's been there for fifty years, because I've lived there for fifty years. Now we don't have an alley. I don't know how the fire department is going to get to my house to try to save it if we have a fire. Just something to think about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no further public comment. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a discussion and deliberation. Ellen?
I believe, uh, mayor, I believe um, one of the applicants was raising a hand. Uh, Lonnie?
I'm so, I'm sorry. Um, Lanny Garcia? Go ahead, Lonnie. Sorry about that.
No worries.
I missed Sean earlier too. Sorry about that, Sean. Go ahead, Lanny.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about who we are as a company, and you know, we are, we are hearing everybody's concerns and we understand. Um, regards to the fence at Victory and Broadway, it's very important that we close off the facility for safety reasons because it could attract thieves. So I think that behooves the community. Um, and also when the perimeter walls go up around the entire uh, facility, that would help mitigate the noise that I believe her name was Barbara was uh, concerned about. Um, and these buildings uh, will have our newly developed um, closed loop system. And if you don't mind, I would like to show some slides on and explain our system. I think that would help the community understand how we're going to mitigate the, the smell.
Okay, Lanny, I've got one question for you then. First, before you begin your slide thing, is, so those fences that are up right now are temporary?
Yes.
So that this alley could be this, hold on just one second. Come on, plop to the mic, please. And Dawn's coming back in here.
Hi, Dawn. I'm out here every day. That, the fence line that he's speaking of is the permanent fence line that's on there, that is on there. And we've had the city inspector out to make sure that we've checked the property lines, that we're within those property lines, so um.
I thought you were going to put a block wall up around the whole facility.
The, the, the back will not be a block wall because the back is uh, is on easement. So we need to make sure that there's access for utilities and everything back there. The front ones are. Oh, Victory, Lily Hill. But he's, the complaint and what she's talking about is the property at Victory.
Right.
The gentleman's talking about, but Lily Hill.
That's what I'm asking, if that is, if out there in the four buildings, if that chain link fence is temporary.
The chain link fence on the back is permanent.
Even on that project?
Between the residents and us.
Residents and the property itself on Victory, which I know isn't necessarily a conversation, but I understand where his concerns are, but that, the.
Go visit there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's what, so there was a temporary put there, and this in the last ten days, maybe, maybe two weeks, the permanent chain link with the privacy screening went on, and that's where, and we have, our superintendent, he's been on the site. We've seen it. We understand it. Had the inspector out to make sure that we were on our proper property lines.
Okay. Lonnie, go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Okay, uh, thank you, members of the council. Again, my name's Lonnie Garcia. Sorry, I couldn't be there. My address is nine three two Earl Court, Needles, California. Um, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so um, we have developed a closed loop three-part system. And basically what happens if this was a grow room, the air is sucked in through the duct here, and then it's where the arrows turn yellow, it hits a U V light. And the U V light um, helps sanitize by destroying pathogens. And then next, the air is going to run through this green space right here, which is a carbon filter. And a carbon filter uh, neutralizes smell, and then it'll go through a third filter, which right here is a microfiber. And um, microfiber filters, we use a minimum M R fourteen, um, and it is rated to be ninety percent uh, efficient to eliminate the smells of tobacco smoke, which we all know is very, very strong. Um, and then after it goes through the three-part scrubbing system, the hot air, the cleaned hot air will exhaust out the building. Fresh air comes back in and it gets mixed, cooled, and then returns back to our space. Um, so not, not only are we working on doing things for the odor mitigation, but we are also doing um, a lot more. We are uh, donating land or providing land to Needles for a power station. Um, we are also, um, let me turn off my screen. I don't have, stop this. Okay, I don't know how to stop staring my screen here. Okay, yeah. Um, uh, we are also um, very environmentally conscious, and we're also going to be having a closed loop water system in our um, buildings as well, which helps um, capture all the water that is um, inside the room, whether it's evaporation from the um, H vac systems, and then it gets cleaned, sanitized, and then reintroduced into our grow rooms. So um, any water that comes into our facility doesn't leave. That's huge water conservation um, methods. And we do have videos, if you guys are interested in seeing the documentary that's been done um, on our companies and our efforts to be sustainable.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and deliberation. Motion is to approve amendment, resolution number twenty seventeen dash twelve for a conditional permit adding a twenty thousand square foot building.
I move to approve.
Give me a second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we, no.
No, 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 no. Don't get, thank you.
That's okay.
She has to powder her nose.
I heard somebody say get Zack. So you were right saying, I heard somebody say get Zack. So you're right to hear a low. One more. You know, we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break real quick. Yeah. Me, too. Thank you. Number four. Is a public hearing. We're gonna start again. Thank you. Public hearing noticed?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For all evidence and testimony for or against approval of a application from Edward Androtti, representative for two oh nine I Street, Inc., for a conditional use permit for a twenty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-two square foot cannabis cultivation facility in the C two general commercial zone located at two oh nine I. Also. Known as APN zero one eight six dash zero. Come on. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
I don't know if that was it.
So, it's APN zero one eight six dash nine zero nine four dash oh one dash zero 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 zero. Zero one eight six dash zero nine four dash zero two dash zero 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 zero. Zero one eight six dash zero nine four dash thirty-four dash zero 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 zero. Zero one eight six dash zero nine four dash thirty-five dash zero 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 zero. Applicant is Edward Androtti. Staff report.
Yes, Honorable Members of the Council, in front of you, we have a conditional use permit at two oh nine I Street for a cannabis cultivation facility. So, again, we're in front of you for a resolution approving CUP of a twenty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-two square foot building located at two oh nine I Street. Here on the vicinity map, you can see that, in the yellow, you're looking at the, the building that is zoned commercial in the city of Needles. To the south is a cannabis cultivation. To the east is a permitted, is a liquor store, and a permitted retail business. To the north is a cannabis cultivation that's been permitted to the, and then to the west is a commercial area with some residential houses. Okay, and then here's just the aerial view of the site. You can see that it's located, again, like I stated, to the south is a cultivation, to the west is a liquor store, to the north is a, is a existing, well, it's a permitted cultivation, and then to the south are some vacant residential houses with commercial businesses. So, the applicant has a, provide for a two-story, twenty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-two square foot cannabis cultivation. The site is approximately point five two acres, located on the southwest corner of two oh nine I Street. So, basically, there was a lot line adjustment, which we'll get into. Now, it's one big lot. There were four different lots that became one. So, the lot has two existing residences budding the southeast corner side of I Street that are to be demolished and removed, and then will be followed by a project grading construction of the building. So, the project site is to operate seven days a week, ten to eight PM, six full-time and four part-time employees. So, ten employees total, and there is adequate parking at the site. Looking at the existing site plan, we'll see here that the property to the north, on the north side of this is Broadway. To the west side of this is H Street. You're looking at the existing house, which are the boxes. The little boxes is the existing house with palm trees. So, this is the existing site plan to be replaced with this building at the site. So, you're looking at two-story, twenty-five thousand square foot. So, the entrance will be off of I Street. So, if you were an individual that wanted to go to work there, have a delivery, you'd come off of I, I Street, enter into the parking lot, which is found on the west side of this building. You'd park your car, and then you'd walk around the front of the building to go into the building itself to, for work. And so, here, as you can see, there are numerous cannabis cultivation rooms at the site on the first story. So, bathroom, trimming room, cultivation room, fragmentation room, break room, things of that nature. And then again, on the second story, you're looking at a series of cultivation rooms. So, there'll be two-story. Looking at the elevations, so you're looking at the proposed site plan facing the alley side, and then facing the Broadway side. So, the building itself would be facing the Broadway side. So, the entrance to that building, as we talked about, you're gonna see that big, large facade facing the Broadway side, and we'll look at that in a second. So, here's the proposed front elevation facing H, I Street. And then this is, if you're standing over by the liquor store, you're gonna be, this is what you'll see on that side. And so, there's a landscaping plan that's been proposed, and so, in front of you, they're gonna cover this area with different types of shrubs, trees, and ground cover, gravel, boulders, river rock, things of that nature, to be able to provide beautification and landscaping to the site. And the applicant's also here, shouldn't go into it. This is what the site looks like today. You've got the, the vacant building, residential, previous building at the site with the liquor store. This is the I Street side facing over. This is the other resident, vacant residential building at the site. This is what's across the street, is the permitted nursery that was recently permitted for cannabis cultivation and distribution. Looking at the Country Bank, this is where we, the proposed retail, H Street, is being worked on right now. It's under construction, so there'll be a retail there as well. And then right behind the proposed site is a cultivation, the former Seven Up building. So, here's a site rendering. If you're coming down Broadway, if you're looking at the corner, obviously, it looks, it'll look much different from what's actually there today, but you'll see the trees, and then you'll see the, the wrought iron with the pilasters, and then at the, well, we'll talk about it shortly, but this is a good opportunity to talk about it. On that corner right there, you're gonna, they're, they've been requested by the planning commission to put metal art on the, on the gate, to be able to provide some side of, some sort of aesthetically pleasing. And again, there's no, they didn't put a four-foot block wall, because they're spending all this money on landscaping, and they want individuals to see the landscaping. And so, when you put a block wall there, you can't really see it. And so, that's why they, they put the gate up. And so, the, the opportunity arose for the planning commission to require of them, and it's a condition that's been put in front of you today, is that they put the metal art there on the corner, on the I, the I Street side and the Broadway side corner there, to be able to provide an aesthetically pleasing vision. So, some of the conditions of approval, which we've already talked about, so there's gonna be street improvements, insulation of curb, sidewalk, gutters, driveways. Basically, they're gonna build them to city standards. Currently, they're a little outdated, some, some broken sidewalks and curbs. They're gonna fix that. The applicant shall install a minimum eight-foot, right, tall, right iron fence with pilasters. That's basically what you just saw in the rendering, basically, to be able to, you know, create separation, but at the same time, look appealing. And again, that condition that we just talked about, that long, lengthy one about odors, dust, glare, noise, smoke, traffic violations, that's, that's a condition that they also have on them. Every cultivation has it. So, they're violating this. They're, they're violating their conditional use permit and the city municipal code. And so, like every conditional use permit, you gotta go through the seven findings. So, yes, it's, it's in the permissible use table. Two, the application is complete. Three, the development is in general conformity with the Needles' general plan. Because the facility is located in the general commercial two, zone, the C two designation under the ordinance, it permits cannabis cultivation to operate and occur at the facility through a conditional use permit, a regulatory permit. So the development is in harmony with the area. As previously stated, that it is located in developed parcel of the city, the point five two acre parcel, which will involve a demolition removal of two existing buildings for proposed construction of the twenty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-two square foot building. The project site is located directly south from the fifteen thousand square foot cultivation and distribution facility, north of an existing four thousand square, square foot cultivation, east of a residential housing and commercial business with gas stations and the Jack in the Box, west of the Needles Point Liquor and a permitted eleven hundred, eleven thousand four hundred and sixty square foot dispensary. So the conditions of approval require, like every cultivation may be performed. The cultivation will perform inside the building. No manufacturing or any type of other issues will occur. Be able to, any kind of products will be able to occur within the site. Very little traffic is expected with the ten vehicle trips per day. Therefore, this type is consistent and occurring within the vicinity of the project site. So finding number five, the development will not materially endanger the public or sa- uh, health or safety. So the project site is located in a commercially zoned area of the city. The conditions of approval have been placed on the projects to ensure that the health and safety are protected, especially with lighting, security, and ventilation, which we talked about earlier with the previous project. And then finding number six, the development will not substantially injure the value in adjoining budding properties. So the project is zoned properly. It is surrounded on all sides with general commercial uses. The project has been conditioned to install landscaping, to beautify the area that is within the city's adopted planting palette and these, uh, planting palette, and these requirements would assist in maintaining the value of the joining budding properties. So at the planning commission meeting on May eleventh, the planning commission commissioners voted unanimously to approve, to recommend to the city council approve of this project. There was written testimony from members of the public in support of the project. The planning commissioners did discuss the conditions of approval for the closed-loop system requirement for cultivations to avoid any emitting odors. And then additional conditions were added to include metal artwork, as we talked about, installed on the wrought iron fence on the northwest corner and Broadway and I Street along Broadway Street. So our recommendation to you today is to approve resolution number two zero two two dash four two for a conditional use permit of a twenty-five thousand seventy-two, two-story square foot cannabis cultivation facility in the C two general commercial zone located at the 209 I Street. Previously, um, all these different APNs, but there was a lot line merger, so it became one. Based on the conditions that they will put art there, there will be odor mitigation, and it is in general conformity based on the other uses within the, the, the project area. And then the applicant and the representative is here also as well. If you have any questions for staff, I am now prepared to take them.
Okay, is there any que- Ellen, go ahead.
Luminous siding. Okay. Serious luminous siding. Okay, on this, this front part here, I love the idea of the artwork, but one of my concerns, because I do have children and because this is on Broadway and because we want cultivation protected from the public, in putting the artwork on here, putting any kind of artwork on this fence is that, making sure that it's not something that children can climb. I mean, you put something and fix it to the outside, adults, forget, yeah, adults can imagine that children like to climb. And they still want to climb a little bit more there. But that's one of my concerns about the artwork, uh, whether it could be put on the inside, a few inches away. If you really want to get, I love it. I, I love the walls with the miners or the boats or whatever makes our street beautiful. I would like to see that. But my main, my main concern is having children, and we, we not, did not let another place have cultivation because of no fencing, because people would be able to get to it. And so now, and we made the man with the nursery not have a chain link fence on the backyard. We said no chain link fence because children could climb it. It had to be on the iron. So wrought iron is what we want for safety and you cannot climb it. So in putting the artwork there, I do have concerns about the artwork creating a situation where children can put their feet on and climb it and hoist their butts over that fence. Just fall and break their neck or just get on the property, period. So that, I just want to say that about, about that.
We can have them grease it up every day.
Just one comment. It would, it would have to be on the inside because, uh, and that, your great point. It wasn't discussed before, but you bring up a great point. It can't encroach on public right of way. So it couldn't come into our sidewalk, and so it would have to be on the inside. So it's, you bring up a great point.
Any other, um, yeah, any other questions for staff? All right, we're gonna open this up for public hearing.
Yeah.
Public comment, and I want the applicant to come forward. Oh, Wade, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Must be a delay. I guess the question was, uh, I know that Mr. Murch sent a letter in opposition to this, and it was really, really disturbing that he had mentioned that he, he talked to staff and, and about the general plan and, and staff had told him that A to L Street was too much to manage, and so it was gonna be C to H. In my opinion, it sounds like staff is, I don't know what staff he talked to, but it sound like, it sounds like micromanaging the public and the council to me. So I just want that, I just wanna put that out there.
Yeah, no problem. Um, yeah, that's, that was me. Mr. Murch, Sergeant Murch was talking to me. Uh, I was just repeating what was, happened at the open forum that occurred. So as you know, we're working on our general plan, uh, here in the city of Needles. And so the first general plan meeting was up at the rec center. When we went through the rec center, we had different ideas of what the downtown should look like. So we took a poll. And so when that poll, um, and so it showed that everybody wanted this large area, right? And so that was brought forward. Um, so what we wanted to do was emphasize the downtown because when we applied for this grant for the landing settlement, we really focused on being able to define our downtown. That was part of the, the application. And so what I was telling Sergeant Murch was that when we had that open forum, the meeting, when the public came and spoke to all of us, uh, well, not all of us, but the individuals. So I put it on, the consultant was there, the city manager was there, and there was about thirty members of the public. And so what was discussed during that meeting was, um, and again, it's gonna come back to the council. So the council has to define that area, but just what those members of the public that were there at that meeting, what they had talked about was defining an area between H Street and C Street. It to be, and that's what was, and so that's what we have on record of that meeting notes. And so we were just taking the input from the public, and I just explained that to Sergeant Murch of what was discussed at that public meeting. So, so the council is the overall determination of how that's gonna look. And then talk about, um, the managing the larger area. And so when we talked about, um, and, and also, if you wanted to look at that meeting, that meeting is found online uh, on the city website. So you can go through the open forum, the discussion of the downtown community. And so everybody can, can hear it for themselves. But basically, there was just this discussion that if you have the consultants that work for us decided or stated that if you have this huge area, that it's harder to maintain. And so that's all I was saying. I, I was just talking about, um, what the consultant had, had told us. And so I was just sharing with him what happened at that, that hearing. So it's important to, to understand the comments.
All right, Wade?
Yeah, um, okay, I understand that, Patrick. Thank you. Uh, so, and the final decision is up to council. It seems a little premature to vote on this tonight, I think. Without, without that, without the council approving any of that just yet. But I don't know what direction we can go in with that concern there.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions from council? Okay, we're gonna open it up for a public hearing. Let the public comment on this if they want. I think the applicant, if they'd like to come up, there might be some questions for you also.
And also for the record, we do have the email. Pat Murch in opposition.
We all got that from, yeah, Pat Murch wrote an email in opposition to both. So. You guys. Applicant, I don't know.
Applicant, we're just, yeah, Cheryl, um, with more design. Cliff's part of the, um, ownership team, but we're just here to answer questions if you guys have them. Sounds like we do.
Questions from staff for the applicant? I mean, from council?
I guess my.
Wait.
Um, I guess my only question is, is, um, because we are starting to encroach on the downtown, and I know that across the streets approved, um, already for something. But here, um, what are the, I guess, I guess, what are the ways that, um, like, yeah, never mind, maybe I don't have a question. Sorry. I was talking out. I'm just, I'm just wondering, what are?
Why?
What, what are you gonna get?
Well, I guess my first question was the, the sidewalk, is that gonna be a full-size sidewalk? Because from here, it just looks like a little curve.
No, it's gonna be the city standards. I mean, this is just a rendition and it's never too exact, uh, you know, as far as the street and everything, the streets obviously don't look like that. Um, so your curb and gutter is all gonna be matching fresh, beautiful, um, to your city standards. So that will all be freshened up. We're pouring concrete down the alley, like redoing that alley part. So that whole section is gonna be freshened up. And the goal here is not to, this is just a building on Main Street, right? Regardless of what's going on in the inside. This project too has been underway for almost two years now. I kind of got involved over the last six, like, I'm third person involved trying to help them finish up. So they're very, very vested, and it's been going on a long time. Um, and then once I got involved, you guys started talking about drawing the lines. Um, I was here when we, the nursery across the way. So, I mean, my idea would be the, the nursery across the way, we need, that needs to be beautified, right? That's, this is the entrance into the city. So once that building's up and everything is, is fresh and new and our building over here, it's gonna be a nice entry. We do have that blank wall on the, and on the sides, and we're not really allowed to advertise or do anything. So I know that they're willing to put something out. We just didn't, you know, know what the goal of the city is. You want Route sixty-six, like, type mural, or is there something? I haven't seen that from you guys yet. What, um, your vision of the downtown area? Because I know you guys are underway with that. So those are open to you guys that we can work with you guys with.
I guess I agree. I guess that kind of, in my mind, are the ones that, so what do you say to, um, people in the community saying, oh, it's another grow on Broadway? Like, what do you guys say about that? Like, how do you respond?
My response on that is, I mean, the lines were drawn a long time ago. And not, it's not like we get to go out and be like, we want that property. It's what's available and who's selling. So even right now, if I were to go out and look, either the property so far away has no, um, utilities or no power, so it's not usable. So we're, and especially at the time when everything, all the lines were drawn, right? Everybody started popping up with what's available. So all those properties have been picked up, moved along. So there isn't a lot of choice. I know it seems like, because that's the comment oftentimes, like, why not put it over here? But it's not that simple when you're out looking for property to buy. You got a couple options. And then we have to weigh it out as investors, and so they acquire this property, they have the property, that's why it's there. I mean, it's dilapidated buildings that, you know, need to go away. And I feel like this is a much better entry and scene. Again, people coming into town don't know what's going on in that building. Right? No one needs to know. And if they fail and it, somebody else takes it over as whatever and makes it a furniture store or whatever it is, you have a nice, beautiful building that's now for lease. So to me, the goal of the city should be to get these properties sold off, get them renovated into whatever. And whether it's a can, like the dispensary or whatever, I don't, I mean, the dispensaries, people know it's a dispensary. But if it's distribution and grow and manufacturing, all that stuff is going on inside. No one knows what's happening, and I don't know why that, what's going on inside doesn't matter. You have a fresh, beautiful building, and I'd much rather drive down Broadway and see this and the building across the street and every new building. So I would encourage some things, you know, going down Main Street, because the cannabis is what's bringing the money right now to do the build. And, you know, now I spoke when we were talking about, um, limiting the number of dispensaries. I think you should let a million of them come in, make all brand-new beautiful buildings because there's only gonna be seven that can sustain because they, there's not enough money. But let everybody come make your buildings beautiful, and then let them lease it, that new beautiful building to something else. But, and get away from the cannabis scare. So to me, I think it's a beautiful building. It looks great on any street. And like I said, we have big sides that we can do some cool Needles things and participate with the city, and they're willing to do that.
Might be for the staff, this might be for you. I'm not sure. The door at the, the first, when I looked at this thing, I thought, oh, it's pretty. But the thing that I find a little bit odd, and it's probably, it might have to be this way, is the front door or that door? Because if someone's starting down the street, there's like, oh, there's a door that seems like it's the center of the building, like you would just, like a bill, the business, but there's the fence. So is it have to be right there or can it be on the side, like?
Well, I wanted to make the build on the front, make it like any building and not a cannabis facility that, and it's Main Street. So that's, I mean, our address is I, but I didn't want to do the front facade on I. I wanted you guys to have the front facade on Broadway. And that's kind of just how the buildings were. It was an existing building, so there was some constraints as well. I couldn't, I wouldn't have maybe done it that way on the lot if I'd been involved in the beginning, but we're just working with what we have. But I think that gives you the better frontage versus having a plain side on Broadway. I think you all would like that. Yeah, no problem.
Ellen, did you have something?
Or multiple offices. I mean, these buildings can be so many different things later.
The building's beautiful. I wish it was a grocery store.
Keep opening cannabis so I can get you a bunch of people in this town so that we can bring the grocery stores in. I mean, we have to develop the town and develop the growth to get, I know you guys have been working with grocery stores and trying to get people here. At the end of the day, you need the demographics and the income. Cannabis is bringing you that income because all these people that work in here make no less than a twenty-five bucks an hour because there's all competing with each other. They get dollar raises all the time. So these aren't minimum wage jobs by far. They're competing with each other to keep the employees because there's such a small amount of employees that they're actually paying higher wages here than they are in bigger cities where there's more people to pull from. So you guys are increasing your per capita wage and by ten dollars, because these are your minimum wage entry-level jobs.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Cliffy. Hope Parker is on Needles, Needles, California. Going back to your first question, you know, before anybody goes in and buys any properties, you know, we went in and checked with Cindy and, you know, she pulls out the, the deal on her computer and, you know, she said it checked all the boxes before we move forward on purchasing and processes. And then I found out later, as I'm new to this, that, you know, through Patrick and then Rick reinforced it later, that, you know, it comes down to the council's approval. So I, it's been a little bit learned, but you know, the first step was going down there and, and, you know, it seems like, yeah, it meets all the requirements, and that's kind of how this came about, you know, so.
That's why those, that's why those lines are important, and you guys drawing those lines and being clear. And anything that's in process before we make those lines, you kind of have to give them that consent that they went in and asked, do I meet all the, his list of criteria that we have to meet? We get that list. We're in the right zone. It conforms. There's a cultivation behind it. You know, there's all this stuff going on. So it conformed and it meets all the requirements. It just became, you guys were starting to decide you might not like it anymore on that street. So I just want you guys to remember that and be fair to these projects that are older and coming through. And then once we draw those lines and say nothing from whatever letter streets that we're doing, then it's clear and we won't buy those properties anymore.
Great, thank you. Sir, are you part of this?
Hi, my name is Mukesh Patel from Anaheim, California. I'm the applicant. We spent almost two years, more or less, to get this project up to today. And we love to, you know, involve with this very fast as we can. You talk about the groceries. So I'm a meat market business owner. If I succeed in this, I'll bring meat market here in town. I want five meat markets and I don't mind to build one here.
Super, thank you.
So please help us out.
I don't think I, I may have missed it. Um, planning commission did, I'm sorry, Barbara Beard, two thirteen Safari, am I out of line?
You're using up your time.
Don't worry, it's just a quick question, and I'll ask for more time if I go over. There, in planning commission, there was a letter from the resident right across the street that she wanted it. So did you get a letter from a resident across the street? We didn't, I don't believe we saw a letter from Pat Murch.
They just got sent today.
Okay, so we didn't. But there was a letter in our packet from. from the lady that's across I Street, I believe, saying that she was excited about this going in. So I just thought I would note that for you.
Thank you. Sure, it cleans up the neighborhood. Mike, please.
Yes, there was two letters to support. The liquor store behind it had also sent a letter in too in support of it. And the only resident on I Street had sent a letter.
Great. Is there any more public input? I've seen that we're gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and deliberation. Tana, did you have something?
The thing is, is I'm, I've been opposed to anything on these streets. I've never liked any of these. They voted in the I Street one and then they, we councils allowed H Street to come in and now they've allowed the, um, nursery to be changed. So, I mean, I voted no on every single one of those. So I know it's weird now for me to say that I'm okay with this because I feel like we've set a precedence for this area already. So I don't, I know that there's the talk of the buildings going up, increasing their costs and their sales, but we've known that's gonna happen. I've been saying that for six years. So it's something that, and look at that, look at the before and the after picture. I mean, God, that building has sat there, this looked this way for the last ten years that we've been here. So, I mean, I just, I, I don't hope you fail by any means. But again, if something happens, it's a beautiful building. And I'm, I'm like the biggest opponent to any of this area. But this has set the precedent that this area, this from the east, the west side of the H Street on now is going to be allowed weeded. I mean, I, as much as it hurts my soul, it's still, I get it. It's appropriate for that area.
I agree with you. I mean, that's, I'm with y'all, everything you just said. I just, I see a building that can be used for other purposes.
Yeah.
If they don't make it.
In my mind, I had a different idea for our downtown, of course, one hundred percent. But this is beautifying our area.
Yep. That's probably why the lady that lives across the street sent a letter in support because it cleans up her neighborhood.
Up these houses, yeah.
All right, there's no, uh, further discussion, we're gonna, I'm sorry, go ahead, Wade.
Yeah, and a touch on what Tana said, um, I've been opposed for this area too. I voted no on the, across the street at the nursery. Uh, I will touch on this, yeah, dispensary, everybody know what, what's in it. Um, I know Cheryl, with all due respect, everybody knows what's in the cultivation too. Um, the, the smell comes out of just almost all of them and we just discussed that in one of the items today. So people will know what's in it and I don't think, uh, I, I think we need to be transparent when it comes to that and people should know what's in it. Um, yeah, I, I, I do, I've never wanted it in our downtown area, which we haven't got. We haven't said what our downtown area is gonna be yet until the general plans. And Tom is right, it's a, it's a nice building, but I, I just, man, I am really torn. I am not gonna lie, I'm really torn. Uh, I just wanted to make that known that people are gonna know what's in it. Thank you.
Well, Wade, I think Cheryl's point was that people coming through town aren't gonna know what's in that building. It's just a big, beautiful building. Yeah, so.
Yeah, the people that, yeah, I get that, the people that come through, I agree.
All right, so we need a motion?
I'll move to approve. Great, do we timeout? Is there the, the smell mitigation that's in there, right?
They're just emphasizing now the vote point.
All everywhere smell has to be taken care of.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Start the timer again. Timeout's over.
Timeout's over. Yes, I'll move to approve.
Give me a second. Cheryl?
Sorry, um, I think, uh, it got added to ours from planning, the additional condition to do the iron work, like the extra. But you're bringing up the climbing over the fence problem, so can we clarify? It isn't a, it was just a recommendation because Barbara thought that the people across the street had decorative iron work. And it's been clarified that they don't. It's, the decoration was on the building. So I just don't want it to, do you want the decorative? Yeah, I would rather put something on the building like that goes with the idea.
Go ahead, Rick.
I agree that if you want those long poles, those broad irons, because kids can't climb them, adults can't climb them. But you could always have art a foot behind the fence to.
Like the mariachis.
Yeah, yeah.
Except I would this time not have.
You have them playing music too.
It's parking though. You guys remember parking is tight if, and there isn't land. Like if I had a la, enough room, it's a tight spot. And the building was already built, so we didn't have a lot of stuff to work with. So it's like bicycle parking right there. I don't have, I would encroach and then end up losing parking. Um, so if I can't stick it on the fence, I'm going with, can we put it on the building? Put something on the building, which we could leave up to you guys to help guide which.
Is this in top of the fifty percent enhancement that they've already had to do? So we don't, twenty-five percent.
I don't know whether it's been met by.
Patrick, is that, yeah. This is on top, this is addition to that? So you've already met the requirements that we've required, all the others, we've not required anybody else to add this.
But they could put a mural on the side of the building.
Yeah, I don't, I think you, you guys are for, like, we just like, do you want the city of Needles? Do we want Route sixty-six? I didn't want to, like, we can collaborate on putting something because it is a plain side and we have that retail space to offer.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just talking about.
Suggest that y'all consult the Needles Tourism Group at the chamber about what might be.
Right.
Cause we just saw the museum put a wonderful mural on there.
Right.
And it's something akin to that. Put there.
The museum organized that too, though. So just, they're the ones who.
But I mean, we're.
Yeah, I just think you guys are figuring out what you want your downtown to look like. So it's a perfect opportunity to be like, welcome to Needles or like do something there that we can tie in. I would like to stay away from.
Uh, remove, so condition number six would read artwork to be placed on the northwest corner of Broadway and I Street, Broadway to be visible from that area. So that it'll be visible from that area or do you want it on the side of the buildings?
Just visible's fine.
Okay.
Visible is subjective.
All right.
I mean, it's gonna be on either the liquor store side or the I Street side. Those are my two big open.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Kristen, did you?
I do like the idea of the metal thing, if there is any way those could be done. And I mean, if it can be done without being an attractive nuisance where kids can climb on it or whatever, that would be great too. But, but I'm open.
You could probably stand it off the fence, three to four inches with stands. Just stand off the fence, put it up inside. But this is getting way beyond. So.
A- after the planning commission meeting, I, I went over and met with Chris Rock, who works over there for Phillips. And he said that, you know, once we figured out what direction that we would come up with something because, you know, he's, he's a local Needles person as am I, you know, we're just. So, I mean, I, I have taken some steps, but without some kind of direction as to what you guys want to do with downtown, that's kind of what we're just, you know, if there's a theme or, you know, we want everything to tie together and flow smoothly just to make the whole area.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Ellen, did it? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
No.
Belt?
Yes.
That didn't pass. No, it failed. Do you have a comment, Rick? Or question?
Question list, is there another motion? That could change it?
You know, I, I sympathize very much with this situation. Is it right, can I speak for me?
Go ahead, yes.
How many years ago was it that we started talking about not going anymore on, on Broadway? I think most of you here knew that's been going on for a couple of years. These plans you say have been going on for a couple of years. Somewhere in the background, you must have known that the city council had some reservation about having any more cannabis buildings on Broadway.
When they were at the city, when they were going to purchase the buildings, they went through and were told. I wasn't involved until.
I, I know that, I, I know.
And I kind of was the same way because I'd been to the meetings and I knew your stance and said, wow, this is.
But you are aware that that, somewhere along the line, you became aware of.
Well, I became aware because I come to these meetings. The problem is you guys have been talking about it in here and only the people that are actually here or when they're going to the city and buying property and getting advised and talking to, um, staff at the time. Um, they got the checklist, so they met the checklist and this was part of it. Um, so that's what makes it, we were already vested, buildings bought, properties bought because this was the viable area per city staff. And they checked all the boxes.
That's a point that I wanted to make. And the reason I voted no is because I felt there was quite a consensus of feeling among this council that we were not gonna do that anymore. And I think you heard from some people saying that tonight. And I do think you have a great project and, and I think the building is great. And like I said before, I wish it was gonna be a grocery store. But with that, I'm willing to change my vote and, and vote yes.
Thank you.
He's gonna.
Timeout, what's happening?
So you got a motion to reconsider? Is that right?
Yeah, I would like to.
John?
I think, I think that Vice Mayor Pageant changed his vote.
And that's all we need to do?
Yeah.
All right, so we're not off the item yet, so now it's four to one. So it passed. Got it? Thank you.
We're telling, I mean, but.
All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Careful the rest of them.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion to the foremost. The mayor and any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar. Oh yeah, text Zach, let him know, get on. Thank you, guys. For the consent calendar discussion, prior to council action, a member of the public may address city council on matters. Schedule on consent calendar, a three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, prove items five through thirteen on consent calendar by affirmative call vote. We have a motion? We have a second. All right, call for the vote. You second it.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Councilmember Longacre, have you joined the meeting yet?
He's in the process.
All right, fourteen. Approve the twenty-sixth amendment to contract number ninety-nine dash three six seventy-six with the county of San Bernardino in the amount of three million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars providing for law enforcement services by amending Schedule A of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Unauthorized, the mayor to sign the same. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you.
Last, last year, you took two actions to enhance law enforcement in the city. You initially took an action to add overtime hours to, uh, increase, uh, coverage. Then you added mid-year, agreed to add, uh, a deputy to the law enforcement staff. The projected, uh, the twenty-three budget.
Hello?
Yeah.
Is that, you're on.
All right, thank you, Your Honor.
The twenty-two, twenty-three budget is column A on this sheet. And it shows that, um, to just roll over with the, but with a full year of second deputy that, or the first deputy, that it would go from three point zero three to three point three six nine million, uh, plus the other expenses. So three point two to three point four. Additionally, uh, which would amount to fifty-five percent of our general fund going to law enforcement. What you have in column B on this chart is, uh, the sheriff's, uh, request to add an additional deputy. Yeah, what was added last year or equivalent forty hours of patrol per week. But there are other costs in that and that would take it from three point two million last year to three point four for next year. Instead, it would add another nearly four hundred thousand dollars for forty hours of patrol, which would take us from fifty-two percent of our budget to sixty-one percent. That would be, uh, going to law enforcement. Now, we've had discussions before about, uh, the opportunity to secure a, an, an additional officer through a grant program that we're pursuing that would be related to school resource. But that is not certain. But we're gonna do everything we can, uh, to get that. So your choice today is to, uh, adopt the budget as, uh, was recommended or add another forty hours of patrol. But we would need to take it out of the, uh, reserve that you saw earlier in the budget, which is one point one. So we would need, that would be where you would get the money to allocate to this program if you wanted to add an additional forty hours. Now, uh, a couple of years ago, we received crime stats, uh, in advance to help us make this decision. But, uh, this year, the crime stats aren't available, uh, just because of timing. If the council wants to add it tonight, we would revise the budget to take money out of reserve. If you want to add it at mid-year, we could do that.
That gets, I'm sorry.
But it's important that whatever you do, you take an action tonight because the county board supervisors needs to adopt a Schedule A as part of their actions during their budget process. So it's either column A or column B. Those are your teachers.
So what I was just saying is B puts us to two deputies on the street twenty-four seven. Captain?
Yes, to answer your question. You recall before we added the deputy in January, we were down to one deputy on duty half of the time. Deputy that was added in January got us a little closer, but there are still gaps. And our desire is to have two deputies on duty twenty-four seven, three sixty-five guaranteed level of service um, to the citizens. I, although we don't have the crime stats, I can tell you that our call volume's gone up. Our reports have gone up and our arrests have gone up last year. Fortunately, we're still waiting on the state of California to finalize the crime stats. So, um, but that's an indicator that our volume's going up. And so the desire is to have two on at all times.
That'd be my desire too, for officer safety and for the community.
Absolutely.
Are there any questions for the captain or staff? Ellen? Sorry, use your mic.
Can't hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, there have been some questions. First of all, I personally wanted to see the stats because that's what we saw last time, to see the crime stats because it was a decision on whether or not we felt it was really worth not, it's always worth it. I won't, that's the wrong word. Whether or not we were in the position to go forward, do we really have that? And I know that per capita, I mean, Needles crime doesn't seem like that much, but per capita, it's, it's high.
It's very high.
I, I do understand that. I I do understand that. Um, I've had some comments from constituents about times where they're seeing our deputies sitting at the water tower for a really long, long time visiting. I teased them a few times myself. But, um, with the, um, will these crime stats be available soon or?
That I do not know.
Okay.
I I've inquired with our statistical people at our headquarters. They do not know.
Okay.
I can tell you, you know, it's hard to compare crime stats just one year to the next because there's so many variables, especially the last few years with this COVID. It's thrown everything into a state of flux. But what we have seen uh, throughout the county and even in the crime stats last year was an increase in violent crime, aggravated assaults.
Yes.
Um, to me, that is a significant thing. You know, part two crimes, which are the low-level thefts, they changed a bunch of laws. You can hardly compare those crimes. But the crimes that really affect people, the crimes of violence, are the things that concern me. Not only for the community, but for the deputies responding to those. Uh, the violent crime rate in Needles is very high. In fact, I can tell you it's the per capita, it's the most violent crime. Has the highest violent crime rate in the county of San Bernardino, per capita.
I do want to share with you on this, on a lighter note. I cannot even count the phone calls that I have had in the past month and a half asking, what is going on? Why are the police all over Needles? And I said, what do you mean? And they said, there's just deputies, they're driving up and down the, they're driving up and down my street, they're up and down my street. I said, well, you have stuff going on in your street? And I said, no, that's what they do. They drive, they they are, they are present and they want you to know. So I just wanted to let you know that that has been noticed, people are noticing, and that's a really wonderful thing because I think that helps keep, uh.
Well, and that is, that is one of the goals, high degree of visibility.
Right.
And those crime stats come from the FBI. You can go to the, in the last year's, um, year-end report, I always include links of where you can get this information. And those crime rates come from the FBI. And those are the most recent crime, violent crime rate stats that are available on the FBI website. You can go to any city in America and they're on there. Um, to get back to your comment about the vehicles, um, the question would be, do they say sheriff or police on the site?
That's true.
If it says sheriff, that is not a city vehicle. The city doesn't pay for that asset. In addition, deputies work out of their cars. They work on their computers. They do reports in their cars. They don't work in the office. We want them to be out in the field. So they can respond rapidly to different parts of town. We don't want them sitting in the office all day long. And they don't. So they work out of their cars, their cars are their office. So that's why they're out in the field, parked at different locations.
Thank you. Well, I can answer that question, but I just, I did want you to know that the the presence of the vehicles up and down the streets have been duly noted. And I do want to thank you for the extra activities.
And we, with the extra deputy, we've been able to do extra patrols down at Safeway Park. Um, alleviate a lot of problems down there, I think. We want to create a high degree of visibility in town just for the safety of citizens.
Absolutely.
Um, and so
Absolutely.
that's, that's why we want to be able to have those opportunities to drive through neighborhoods and talk to people and deputies do that.
I love people knowing that you're driving around. Thank you, Ross. Thank you very much.
So don't hold your breath on those crime stats. I'm sure they're not hurrying up with all the crap going on in the state because of their wokeness. So we probably won't see those for a while.
Yeah, well, certainly as soon as we're able to compile them, I'll prepare another report and and get it to everyone. I can come here and talk about them also.
Thank you. Okay, do we, uh, want to go with the extra, the officer we need for two twenty-four seven or? A, we need a motion, we need to move this forward.
I'm going to motion for this, keep it as A at this point, the one point five officers.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Keep it the same. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. Get those crime stats as soon as you can.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes. Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Fifteen, provide staff direction on proposed ballot measures to establish a trans occupancy tax for short term rentals.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll be very brief. Um, you have talked about, uh, two tax majors that, um, you might, uh, consider for the November ballot. One, we've already dealt with the cannabis tax and marijuana tax. This one deals with, do you want to subject the, the bed breakfast units, the residential units?
Airbnb.
Airbnb. The Airbnb units, you know, which act as a type of hotel. Do you want to, um, require them to pay the ten percent city grants and occupancy tax? This is a draft of what an ordinance would look like. Again, like the, like the marijuana tax, it would, uh, this would start the discussion. And then you would add a subsequent meeting, decide whether to put this on the ballot. In the meantime, we would have some meetings with the industry and try and
I move to approve.
What's that?
I moved to approve already.
Yes, absolutely.
I was checking.
Okay, we have a motion to say anything?
Your Honor. Your Honor.
Wade?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement. If this is, if this does go on the ballot, I would really like to see the, uh, four hundred dollar, uh, fee that we had passed go away, if it passes on the ballot. Um, I think that's fair. Uh, I just want to put that out there and maybe we could, I don't know how we go about that. Maybe we can put that on another agenda. So.
Probably.
That's it.
Probably do that after the election.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If it.
Yeah, you can, if, if you can amend an ordinance to add or you don't have to pay. Fees are, are, you have discretion.
Right, right. Yep, the tax has to be approved by the voters. And Mayor, was there any public comment on this? Is there any public comment?
Sorry.
I figure when it comes up for discussion, they can talk about it. Does Donna see any tonight? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell? Evans?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we've dealt with sixteen, so we're going on to the city attorney's report?
I have, and I have, I have nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, John. Uh, city manager's report?
Quick things. Um, we did conduct the spring rabies clinic. Uh, there were a hundred and thirteen animal pets, uh, that received shots, seventy-five this temper vaccination, eight rattlesnake vaccinations. So, and they sold sixty-five dog lice in the process. As you know, we received rabies. The Dr. Beeks, who's our vet, uh, took in thirty-two hundred dollars on the main clinic that she did. And, uh, so while we were, all we owe her is mileage, lodging, convenience. So the the grant we got, we can save that and sponsor an additional clinic. Rather than two clinics a year, maybe we'll be able to do twenty-three as a result of that. So, uh, then, uh, we've gone to the summer raids of the golf course. Uh, we took five owners on from the Browns, during raids, been working with the budget today. We've been working with River Valley Inn on their uh, multi-agency inspection. And we continue to work with the grocer about laying his concerns on California.
Great.
That's all I.
All right, Ms. Ellen?
Hi, um, first, before I get into ICSC, I want to just give a shout out to code enforcement and to our sheriff's department for everything that they have had to put up with in the past week. It was one heck of a week. It was pretty hellacious. And, um, you you guys are all amazing. And thank you very, very much for what you have had to, what you do and what you had to do this week. Um, we went to, um, we went to ICSC, Kirsten and Patrick and I got to go to Vegas, ICSC. And I think Patrick and I walked probably, uh, fifty miles. I'm not even joking. That is, that place is huge. It's buildings long. And we, we are in so much pain from walking around. But we had really great meetings. We made some really, um, wonderful contacts. And, um, and, um, Mr. Um, Michael does, um, wonderful, wonderful stuff for us. And, um, I think it was a very successful event. And I'm really glad that I had the opportunity to go and and to spend time with Kirsten and, um, Patrick there because we're still learning. So I, we have a lot to learn in that arena. And Patrick was really wonderful. Thank you for answering our questions and guiding us through all that.
Kirsten? Oh, wait, Wade? Sorry.
Yeah, I I have a couple of things, uh. I want to, um, I want to thank the rodeo committee for the scholarships and, uh, and I just want to remember our fallen heroes, uh, this Memorial Day. And I know the city is having their ceremony at River View Cemetery. I'm not, I'm not, uh, exactly sure on the times. I'm sure Rick will tell us that. And also I want to give a, a big shout out to the Needles Lady Stings, state champions again. Um, I think, I think that might be fourteen now. So congratulations, Lady Stings. That's it.
Kirsten?
All right. I just have a few things. Um, one, everything Doc Pageant said tonight about that thing, um, on Broadway. Like, I completely, he said exactly what was, what I was thinking. And I have to say, the reason I was fine going forward with them tonight is because of, um, because they've been doing this for so long. But we really need to get that general plan decided and done. And this, I know we're working on it, but it's just, makes it harder each time. Um, the rec staying open, what Jared said tonight, that's a great idea. I really hope we could figure something out about that. I've never thought of that. I like that idea. The Needles Museum had a bunch of first graders come today. The Needles Museum and the tourists, um, the tourist group, they had, um, a bunch of kids come to the museum and to the, um, the Algarces, and they did a tour and they met like somebody dressed up like, I mean, it was actually Spike, you know, somebody was dressed up like Spike and they, it's kind of a really cool event. So I love that. So great job, guys. And ICSC was awesome. I am so impressed with Patrick. He really is an asset to our city and he did a great job. I felt proud to be there with him. So, well, I love him too. But I just, great job, guys. That's all I have to say.
Dr. Pageant?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Tana?
Um, just want to, um, again, um, shoot, I guess I should, well, we're gonna, I'm setting up a golf tournament. We'll start with Jay Todd, my, the golf pro talked about it yesterday at the, um, at the Parks and Rec for dyslexia awareness. We're going to have it October twenty-second. I know it's a little ways out, so I'm just putting the idea out there so everybody, we can just start talking about it, um, dyslexia awareness to make everybody aware about what dyslexia is and how important it is that we start educating our public about it when twenty percent of the population is dyslexic. Um, so I just want to bring that up right off the bat, just to let people introduce the topic. October twenty-second, that will be coming around. Um, this Memorial Day, I want to thank all our, all of the fallen, um, servicemen and women throughout our country. And I will bring the rest up on the next meeting. Have a good night.
All right.
I I just want to remind everybody that, uh, we're having a work day at the cemetery this Friday between, I think it's nine AM. Uh, so if we can get a big turnout, it usually only takes a couple of hours to put the flags and the white crosses on that for, uh, law enforcement and first responders' graves. So if anybody wants to join us, uh, I've released city employees to go work on that. But, um,
Zach?
Yes, John, I've got a couple of things real quick. Um, I would like a summary of, uh, the run for the wall, uh, what we spent being a co-sponsor and staff used. Um, sign whenever, but I would like that. Um, I'd like a report every media or every couple of meetings on our, on our replacement of our street signs. Let's show these people. We're, we're receiving emails on street signs now, so let's show them what we're doing. Um, as Jared said, there's been a huge rash of graffiti lately, definitely along the north side. Keep our eyes out. If you see somebody vandalizing a building, give the sheriff's a call. And, uh, last but definitely not least, um, I'd like to direct staff to research certification courses and insurance liability costs for code enforcement to carry tasers. Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. And all I have is, let's remember the, uh, fourteen kids and the teachers that got shot up today. Again, at a school and, uh, God will be with them and help them through it. Pray that we don't have anything. With that, we're adjourned. Good night.